Kenny, will you do our invocation please this morning? Couldn't unmute.
Thank you Kenny.
We have the agenda before us, are there any additions? The microphones are really soft.
Yeah. How's it sound now?
I can hear you fine Isaac. But Lorelei and Kenny's were very soft.
We're still in a pandemic, we haven't came out, we went into one. We have a pandemic task force. I believe two members are gone, and we have two solid members with us, Esther and Alan. And Lance and Now are on that, John is gone, the creator of this. So if it's, however we do that because well just the last traffic that we had with trying to accommodate somebody and just being told, you know, we don't do this no more, they're kind of doing this, you know, so just for myself, you know, the directions where to send these people.
Okay, we'll add that on, and then I have three small things to add. The first one would be the email that I forwarded from Carla La Pointe. The second one is in relation to the Powell Committee. And the third one is in relation to the water issue that we just had. Are there any other additions? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the amended agenda? No. Okay, we actually have one other item to add from Isaac. He's making the copies right now. Kenny, will you add that into? Is there a second? Second by Coley, any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carried. Okay, reading of the minutes, item number one from July 13 to 2022 CEO meeting, is there a motion to approve? Moved by Kenny, is there a second? Second by Coley. Any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carried. Item number two, July 18, mid-month tribal council meeting minutes. Moved by Kenny.
Okay.
Second by Louis. Any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carried. Item number three, on one of these, let me find out where, just one second. Yeah, is this one, we're on the general council, yeah. The item number three, general council meeting minutes. It shows me as being absent, but I was present. Because I make motions and so that needs to be amended. So we're on item number three, July 20, general council meeting minutes. Shows me as being absent, but I was at this meeting, so that needs to be corrected. Moved by Kenny, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Isaac. Any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carried. Item number four, treasures report, July 22. Do we have a motion to approve? Moved by Kenny, is there a second? Second by Isaac. Any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carried. Item number five, July 25, the emergency services report meeting. Is there a motion to approve? Moved by Kenny, is there a second? Second by Isaac. Any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carried. Also FYI, Kenny's mic is still really soft, I can hear Isaac great, but Kenny's mic is not, so. Okay, ratifying the five signatures, item number one, emergency services, emergency assistance for the utility bill an amount of $257.99, is there a motion to ratify?
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Isaac. Second by Louis, is that, was that you Louis?
Yeah.
Okay, got it. Any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carried. Item number two, adopt resolution 22-142 FY 2023 EPA. ARP funds one of Vega tribe for PM 2.5 air monitoring project, is there a motion to ratify? Moved by Coley. Is there a second?
Okay.
Second by Louis. Any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carried. Alright. New business and old business is not listed here. So we'll go on to the tribal council items. Item number one, travel approval, FEMA Region 7 Travel Summit, August 23 through the 25. Was there specific people going to this, or is it just the general request for approval?
There was myself and Tori was supposed to go, but I have some, I'm not gonna be able to make it, I have another personal obligation that I gotta get tended to. So I don't know if she wanted to send somebody else, or if somebody else was gonna come. But basically, just in a nutshell, it's go down there and kind of learn some of the new things that FEMA is doing and how they can work with the tribe and how the tribe can work with FEMA and in the event of something going on, what the process would look like and everything like that. So that's pretty much be kind of like a meet and greet and then there's other tribal councils that actually meet up down there too. And it's a good place to network, that's down in Kansas City, Region 7. So I think that was for travel approval, but I would make a motion for anybody from the table that wants to go and kind of learn about that.
Motion by Isaac, is there a second? Second by Kenny. Any further discussion?
The other thing is, is that I think maybe physical resources might have had a couple people interested, Autumn and Irita, maybe. I don't know, I would have to double check, but one of them might be able to fill my spot as going. But I just wanted to throw that out there too.
Okay, I know time's getting a little short on that, so they may need to hurry, simply because I think, what is that, 10 days away-ish? So I need to figure that out quickly. Yeah, Lorelei.
I made the motion just to, just for the tribal council, but the tribal council could also let, because those two, you can send two people and they'll reimburse the tribe for travel. So I just left it at the table.
Okay. Any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carried. Okay, item number two, FirstNet presentation. I know this might be a little bit annoying, but Isaac's microphone is still the only one that has a really good tone with. Lorelei's was really soft, Coley still is, and Kenny's is as well.
I paid him extra 20 to turn mine up, so.
I thought you were gonna say you paid him extra 20 to have the others. Yours is fine Louis. Yeah, there's no voice coming at all, I see the people presenting and see mouths moving and that's about it.
No, as long as that green light's on, it should be, should be able to pick it up.
I'm sorry, what was that Louis?
They're saying.
Yeah, that's what I was saying to them, there's no sound coming from the presenter's microphones.
He's working on it now. Yeah. Yeah, they can't hear it on the Zoom. Okay. Alright. Yeah, they got that new soundboard in, so it's kind of getting things adjusted on there.
Lorelei, if you're speaking, I can't hear you at all.
She's trying again now. Okay. Hey Brian, they're still working on it, they're, they got about five guys over there running around that board.
Lorelei, if you're speaking, there's no voice.
Is it down there on that snake, on the end of that snake?
The only thing that seems audible at this point is there's some background noise coming through Louis' microphone, and that's all that is coming across. Yeah Louis, I can hear you fine.
We can hear Louis down here too.
So for anybody that's watching or will watch this, we're having a technical issue with the audio in the council chambers. They're working to finish or to fix this and resolve it, so as soon as we get that back online, we will resume. So if you think that you're not hearing anything, that's on purpose because the microphones are not working in the chambers.
And that bus going down to Canoa Saturday? Who's driving the bus?
It was my understanding that was supposed to be tribal transit, so I would assume the drivers.
We got to go to city to hit the train tracks and knock the guys off their chair, their seat, and the passengers got off.
Oh jeez.
Finished the ride.
Garen, if you're speaking, that's still nothing. Nope.
I'm glad you guys weren't trying to zoom in.
I can hear Isaac fine, that's weird.
You guys all gotta come over here.
Okay, now I heard a little bit of Kenny. Very, very soft, Garen.
Test, one, two, three.
Isaac, I can hear you fine.
Okay.
I can hear Garen's voice very softly, but it sounds like it's in the background. No, nothing Brandon. No, it's, sounds like it's picking up from Isaacs, it's really, really soft.
So this mic's too hot.
Even at that distance Isaac, I could hear you fine.
Okay, Brian, you still hear me alright?
Yeah, I can hear you fine.
Okay, so Brandon said to let you know that we're gonna stop the meeting on Zoom real quick and then he's gonna reboot it and come back up and see if that works, because it's on the Zoom side of it.
Okay, just so everyone is aware, we are going to stop trying to correct the technical issue, okay, do what you need to do.
Alright, we'll see you on Monday.
Recording in progress.
I know how that is.
Yeah.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. One, two.
No, he's just trying to act upset. Yeah. Okay, can you hear me now Brian? Again? No, I don't think anybody can hear me now.
Yeah, Isaac, I can hear you.
Oh, okay.
I was muted.
Alright, we're gonna hook a guitar up to it and see if it works.
Alright. No stairway.
All line up over here. Break that podium out.
Yeah, I can hear you fine Isaac, the video's not, I don't know.
Okay.
It's edited. Yeah. Is that Coley? Yeah.
Brian, can you hear me?
It's not as good as Isaac, but yes.
He did. That's you, Coley. I think that's, that one's yours.
That was extra.
Oh.
So what I have to do with that um, that makes to back to the board? There's like a disconnect between the board and the computer, right?
Brian, could you repeat that? They were on mute.
I was basically just giving an update on that the council members are still in attendance. They'll be logging on from their devices or their um, office computers, and once they do in a few moments, then we will continue.
Thank you.
Louis, are we still able to hear you?
Can you hear me?
Yep, perfectly. Thank you.
Can you see me?
I cannot see you.
Here.
Okay. That was us. Sorry.
I see Coley and Kenny have logged on. Can you guys do a quick mic check?
Doing a quick check from Ten- uh, Kenny's computer, guys. Hear me okay?
Yeah, Brandon, I can hear you fine.
Perfect. Thank you, guys.
This is Coley.
Yeah, Coley, I can hear you.
Still loud.
Yeah, I can't even.
That's good, that's good. Thanks, Brandon.
Yep.
Brandon, do I have to speak into anything? Just?
No, Kenny, I can hear you. Whatever you're talking, I can hear you fine.
Can you hear me?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Do you have your mute button?
Okay. Okay.
You ready? I, I believe everybody's on, is that correct?
Uh, we're waiting for Lorelei.
Oh, Lorelei, okay.
She's on, I don't see her.
She's in the chambers.
Oh, okay. Alright, well, everybody's back then, so we can hear everyone fine, so whenever you're ready to begin, probably with a brief introduction.
Well, good morning and thank you for allowing us to come in and present. Um, can you hear me fine?
Yeah, I can hear you fine.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, I'm Pam Bryant. I am the- I'm Pam Bryant. I am the government executive for FirstNet AT&amp;T. I have also with me Nick Olson. He is education consultant for AT&amp;T FirstNet. And we wanted to come in and just talk to you a little bit about what FirstNet is. That's the first question I really got this morning is what is FirstNet? So we kind of want to go through a brief slide presentation to kind of go over what FirstNet is and how it can help your community. What FirstNet is, is it's all deprived from the 9/11. What come out of 9/11 is communications wasn't where it should be. And there was a lot of lives lost because they can't, they couldn't talk. Police couldn't talk to fire. Fire couldn't talk to police. So it was a really bad situation for, I'm getting feedback. Okay, all right. So long as you can, oh, I think it's her computer, maybe. I can hear it from ears. I'm sorry, hold on. You can still turn the volume down, but you can.
Usually that happens when somebody's device is not muted at the same time.
Okay, are we ready? Okay. So it all came from 9/11, and the thing about it is the communications wasn't where it should be. And the federal government looked at the situation and said, you know, we got to fix this problem, which they developed what we call the FirstNet Authority. And the FirstNet Authority took everything that happened at 9/11 and analyzed it and decided, you know, we need to have a public safety network that will be able to talk to anybody in a situation, especially like 9/11 or, you know, any situation, especially out here and where we live in the Midwest. But, so they decided to come up with a plan, and the plan was to build their own network for public safety. And they tried to do that. They seen it wasn't possible, so they put it out for bid. AT&amp;T went in and bid the contract and won the contract. So we have a 25-year contract with the federal government for FirstNet. So that just kind of tells you a little bit of history of how it all started. But you know what FirstNet is for? It's built for primary, and you can see on the screen, the primary examples is fire, law enforcement, EMS, PSAP, anyone that's at the scene of the first accident. So just think of it like a car accident or a tornado. Something might happen. Who's at the scene? The first people at the scene is all the first responders. Now, we have the extended primary also, and what the extended primary is, is anybody that comes in after the fact to help. Healthcare, transportation, utilities, education. And this is one of the reasons we really wanted to meet with the council today is we've talked to a few of the agencies within the tribe here, and we've got a lot of interest, but I wanted to show respect to the council to bring it to you first, to show you what FirstNet is and what it can do for your community. Now, we've talked to the school here, and the school is moving forward. And, you know, it made us think, how are we going to have the school connect to the police department? How are we going to have the school connect to the fire department if there was an emergency? You know, Texas, with Texas in mind, you know, that was a bad situation there. One of their issues was the communication also. And so that's kind of bringing it to light that, you know, things do happen. We never want to see it happen, but it does happen. Tornadoes is another thing, you know. What happens, the first thing, you know, when a tornado hits is the system all goes down or or you can't communicate because everybody's online. Everybody's talking. Everybody's taking pictures and sending them. I don't know if you've ever been to a Huskers game. When you go to a Huskers game, you can't place calls. You can't send texts. You can't send videos because the system is so full. You want to do the next one? Thank you. So that kind of goes over some of the primary agencies and extended primary agencies, but we also have what we call subscriber paid. Like your volunteer firemen, they are eligible also for FirstNet. You want to be able to keep in contact with all the people that are involved with an accident or involved with the tragedy. One of the things with FirstNet that is really important is it has its own core. And what that means is, you think of it as a pipeline. Wherever you are, that's going to work. It doesn't matter if you're here or if you're in Minneapolis or wherever you may be. Oh, you'll always be able to communicate. Sorry about that. You'll always be able to communicate wherever you are because you have an open pipeline with FirstNet. The federal government also set aside ban 14 for FirstNet. Nobody can use ban 14 but FirstNet users. We have other companies that say, well, we have the same thing. We have the emergency plan, just like FirstNet. There's only one FirstNet, and the federal government is behind us. We have obligations we got to meet, and it all started when every governor in the nation approved it to go for it. And it has moved, and your governor here was a little tough on us. We had to come up with some really good, right plans. We had to come up with, you know, build out the system. You know, AT&amp;T had no coverage in Nebraska. I'm the first one to say it because we traveled down here and there wasn't no service. Since that time, within the last 18 months to 24 months, we've put in about 450 sites. This state is lit up and ready to go. It's amazing. I've traveled the whole state, haven't had any issues. I'm pretty proud of the system. I've been with the company about 23 years, and I've never seen it built out like it was built out in the last, you know, couple of years, so. We have a deadline, which is March of next year, 2023. Everything's got to be ready to go, and we feel like we are ready to go right now here in Nebraska. But they're not done. They're going to, they continue to build all the time. You know, the towers are built that we feel comfortable with, but they're always building. We don't know there's a site going up until we get a notification that a site has went up. There's no throttling. You know, you hear sometimes if you do 22 gig on your on your device, that we start slowing the system down. FirstNet, they don't do that. You can use 1 gig or you can use 100 gig. We're never going to slow you down. And, let me see here, I'm just making sure I don't miss anything. And it's encrypted end to end. So you can't be picked up on scanners. Nobody can hear you, and it's just, it's just an encrypted system. My device keeps beeping here. I have a device that I brought I wanted to show, so. Here's FirstNet by numbers. You can kind of tell on these numbers here where it's went. You know, we got 3.3 million subscribers on FirstNet. So if you would have to travel, you know, you hear firemen a lot of times have to go help with a fire, you know, in the Black Hills or Wyoming had fires. I don't know if they're out yet, but a lot of times you send firemen out there. This way you always can communicate because if their firemen are on FirstNet, your fireman on FirstNet, they're always going to have that communication because they have that open pipeline. You can also see now we've got Rog the Dog, 30 Rog the Dogs. That's really getting to be a thing. And I'm not a real dog person, but people that are dog people, you know, they understand that the dog can help you if there's a crisis to, you know, make the person more relaxed. I was actually at a meeting one day and a veteran that was having really hard issues, he got a dog, and it was trained to help through some of the problems he was having in his life. So the Rog the Dog is something that I think is pretty interesting that they would do, and they'll bring him in, bring him in to help. We also have what we call, it's 150 deployables in the United States. Now, what we have as a deployable is, we have a sack colt. I think that's the next picture. Go ahead. There we go. We have the truck that's up on the right-hand side. That truck is probably, I want to say, in Omaha right now. But we have 150 of these trucks around. And what happens if your system goes down? You can call a toll-free number, and on that toll-free number, you can call one of us too. Jackie Duncan is the FirstNet consultant, and she actually has, her son's getting married tomorrow, so she couldn't be here, but we can call one of us and call Jackie, and we'll help you get that truck here. Now, they say the truck will be up and set up within 14 hours. The biggest thing with getting the truck here is the drive time. So if your system goes completely down because tornado or whatever may be, or let's say you just have an event coming in that you know there's going to be a lot of strain on the network, let us know. We can get the truck in and get some more service for your users. Now, you got to be on FirstNet to use the system, use the truck, and that's all free. There's devices too, phones. We have phones, tablets, in-vehicle modems. Those are all FirstNet-capable devices. And we did bring a device here that we're pretty proud of. It's called the SD7. It looks like a walkie-talkie phone. I don't know if they can see it or... It looks like a walkie-talkie phone. It has a button on the side that you can talk, like a walkie-talkie. It also has a SOS button. Now, the school has, just went with this device for emergency uses over there. What happens when you push the red button? You push the red button, it'll send out three text messages to people that you have dedicated on your network for an emergency. Perfect example is you could use them in buses. You could use them, we talked to Isaac the other day, you know, he had a command center that he was working with because your water system, and it would have been perfect for that. He could have handed out the devices for the users. Yeah, he's got the picture up too with a little SOS button there. Then it has a screen on the top too that'll tell you who's talking and who's, you know, talking back and forth. Let's go ahead and do a test call.
Radio test one, two. Radio test out. Yeah, and as you can hear it.
Hi, it's Kristen Boston, and you are coming in loud and clear. Over.
Yeah, I don't know. Did you hear that? Were you okay to hear that, Vice President or Vice Chairman?
I can hear you, and that's a man's voice slightly, but yeah.
Okay. Well, we got a call back, and it's out of Boston, and that's the coolest part about this device too, is you could be in California, Boston, Florida, wherever you may be. It comes off the cellular network. So wherever you are, that device is going to work as long as you have cellular service. So it's a pretty neat device. We've sold a lot of them to schools, but for emergency services, it would be nice to have, even if you aren't using them for every day. You could use them if you have an emergency situation where you need to hand out radios. It's just another way to communicate for your people, for your departments. You can see some of the accessories here. There's a battery. That's how, you know, you can charge them up if you have several devices. We have belt clips. We have, on the bottom, it looks like an old CB radio. What it is, is that device goes right into the kit, and it has a microphone. We also have a privacy handset if you needed. So it's just one of the ways to communicate and be hands-free. There's another down here on the bottom. I have to use my hands. That you can use like for earbud, so. Next. Everybody always wants to know price. You know, it always comes down to price. Well, like I had said about, you know, your governor coming forward and saying, you know, you got to make the pricing comparable to the competition or better. We have smartphone pricing, simple pricing. It's $39.99 unlimited everything, no throttling. You can add a hotspot to that device for $5 extra, which is $44.99. Now, the basic phone, there are still basic phones out there. Some people are using them. That is $22.99. And the device we just showed you, it's called Enhanced Push-to-Talk. That is a $17.99 device per month. So, and the great thing about it is the people we pull over to FirstNet, we also give them an incentive to pull over just because sometimes they might need to get cases or they might need to get car chargers. But with that incentive, you know, we give you $200 per line to move over. So you can bring them all over. You can bring what, you know, you decide you want to bring over, but you still get that incentive, no matter how many you send. We have quite a program with FirstNet. We have a lot of support people, myself and Jackie Duncan. We are the two that, you know, are, you're probably first, you come to us first. But like I have Nick here, he takes care of education. But we also have what we call an onboarding program. What happens is everything has to go into review before we can even put you on FirstNet. The federal government says, yes, you can be on FirstNet, or no, you cannot be on FirstNet. Now, so once we send that off, get the eligibility, you're approved, and I think we already did that, so I think you're all approved. But they assign what we call an onboarding team. What that team does is they set it up, they set the account up from beginning until the billing. So what happens is they assign an onboarding agent. That agent will set up the account. They'll engage with probably your IT people or whoever you want to have set up on there. They'll do training on the portal. We have a wonderful portal. And on the portal, you can actually see when there's outages. You can see a map of where your towers are. It's just a real nice, real nice system. And they'll also come back and they'll review the first bill, which that's one of the things I, you know, in 23 years, I lacked too because I get busy and I think, oh, and then they'll call me and tell me I need help with my bill. These guys will engage with you and make sure the bill is good to go. So, yeah, it's just kind of, and then it's handed back off to us. So it's kind of a circle that we do, and it's just one more way to, for FirstNet to be able to be good for you. These are a few of the devices. We have a mega-range, high-power user equipment. Now, what this does is if you happen to be in an area that you're saying, ah, I'm down in the bottom of a draw. I don't have any service. You know, that's always where your car breaks down or your vehicle breaks down. We have also a high-power user. You can see up on the right-hand corner of using the, I mean, it gives you so many more miles out. It gives you distance on the high gain. But that's what it looks like. On the right-hand side, your antenna, and then there's the modem, and you can hook it into the modem, and then we have the MegaGo. It's another device that will give you more coverage. This is, you can have your own tower. We show this. We don't sell a whole lot of these, but we do have what we call a compact radio deployment. And what that does, it's your own tower. It's your own FirstNet site. If you have an area where there's coverage trouble, you can push the site up, and this is your own site. If you have a disaster, you need it up before we can get there. You got your own device and your own, and it's real small. Like that shows you can haul it on the back of a car. But FirstNet wants to make sure you can communicate, and that's, the FirstNet Authority has put that out there. Just, you know, here it says everyday emergency response teams put their own lives in line to ensure our safety. The least we can do is make sure we have the tools for the communities. So we like to bring a community together so everybody can communicate. The police is really interested in it. Fire is very interested in it. But your other departments that would qualify, like we had on that first screen, was utilities. But, you know, when I work with tribal government, and I work with a lot of tribal government, when there's a disaster, if something happens, everybody steps in. So you have to tell us what departments you feel that you want to be involved, so. But I kind of threw a lot at you. Does anyone have any questions?
Anyone have any questions?
Yeah. Isaac's.
Okay.
Oh, here's Isaac.
So one of the things that I just wanted to share with the rest of the council is that, like she said, the school, I didn't know they were going to be coming in and visiting with the school or anything. But the school is looking at dropping these into classrooms because of active shooter situations and things like that. The public school here in town. One of the other things is that, looking at this, the EMS and CHRs, this is something that they could possibly benefit from too. Everybody runs radios, but this would be another means of communication. And so if we was to go down this route, it would even be like some of the, what'd you call them, the extras, like the not the primary responders.
Extended primary.
Yeah, extended primary. Those guys like facilities. Them guys would be able to all talk to each other. And so in a nutshell, you can design these to have kind of like text groups, but they're talk groups. So you could have facilities all in one group, and then the PD could link into that group and talk to all those guys, our fire, our EMS, and vice versa. So you'd be creating all these different talk groups, and it would be just the push of a button on a cell phone, since everything's kind of going towards cell phones nowadays. But just some things to think about. I know that Brandon had, we have AlertSense, but there's just other ways to get things, get the information across. And as we've seen with the water issue here in town, that was one of the, one of the deals was that we kind of had a somewhat of a little bit of a slow start at getting the communications going, far as even on the utility side and stuff like that. So just some things to think about. But I just wanted to share that with you guys and let you guys know, but I see how it could possibly benefit the tribe if we was to go this route. Thank you.
Isaac, thank you. Isaac also uses FirstNet on his personal line, and some of the firemen do also. Actually, when we pulled up, Jackie drives a little car with FirstNet all over it. Looks like a little zebra. And the firemen, we were over at the police station, the firemen come out and said, are you with FirstNet? And they like the service because of the priority and preemption. I guess I didn't even touch base on that, I don't believe, but... And they like the service because of the priority and preemption, I guess I didn't even touch base on that, I don't believe, but. Um, you will have priority and preemption, and what that means is priority is. You're always on the open pipeline, you're always got service. Preemption is, if it would happen that the system would get full. We could push the consumers off, they could still use nine-one-one, but they won't be able to send video and text and all that. But, um, yeah, it's, it's a great, it's a great plan, um, for communication. You can, you know, you can use it on the cellphone, like the iPhones, you can use them on the, uh. Android phones, Samsung, you can use them for in-car, if they have computers in their cars or vehicles. Uh, so that, it's anything wireless, um, we can connect to as long as it's FirstNet capable, so. Is there anything else I need to bring up, Nick, that I might have missed?
No, I'm glad you touched on the priority, preemption, cause that's a huge.
That's a huge deal, right. Yep, and I did leave some folders, um, it just kinda goes over some of the basics part, parts of FirstNet and I'll leave a few extra for. For the people that are on Zoom. But, uh, yeah, I think for you guys at the tribe here, I think it's a good, good solution for you. Uh, we wanna be able to have you communicating with everybody if there is a crisis. Um, hopefully we never have them, but you know, it does happen, so. But then I appreciate your time today, um, if there's no more questions or anybody else have any questions or comments?
Anyone else? Okay, not hearing any at this point.
Oh, I have someone in the room asking how much it costs. Um, the devices itself, um, they're free. They cost ninety-nine cents, but after three months they give you the device for free. Um, the little, uh, Push-to-Talk device here, it's called the SD seven. That device is three hundred and eighty-nine dollars, but after the third billing cycle, they give you that money back, it's a credit on your bill. That, that is seventeen ninety-nine a month to run that. Uh, voice plans though are thirty-nine ninety-nine, uh, with a tethering, or we call it hotspot tethering. Um, it's forty-four ninety-nine, and then a basic phone is twenty-two ninety-nine, and that's all for agency paid, paid. But if you are a first responder, um, you're eligible for FirstNet pricing. So you can get it on your personal line too if you, if you wanna move those over. And we'll have a, we'll have a team that can come up actually and help with personal paid, too, if that's, if that's an interest out there. Did I answer your question? Can, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay. Uh, the lady in the room was one. Um, for a council member, it would be thirty-nine ninety-nine for unlimited.
And that's, that's everything.
That's your, yeah, that's your phone, it's unlimited for everything. We also have, if you have a Mi-Fi data device, um, those are thirty-six eighty a month. So, um, but just for, for a smartphone, it's thirty-nine ninety-nine, it's real simple on the pricing. Um, the solar storm shouldn't matter on the FirstNet, should be okay. Are you talking if there's a lot of people here, or? Yeah, yeah, that's what FirstNet's all about, so you have the open pipeline, you'll always be able to talk to somebody. Any other questions? Okay, well, I think you, huh?
What, what other markets do you have for selling these phones? What other markets do you have, where you sell these phones?
The markets, oh, yeah, we're nationwide, we're, it's everywhere in the nation. And you can go to other countries with them too, Mexico and, uh, Mexico and Canada, you have no roaming there either. Yep, it's a nationwide network for, for, uh, and it's built for you. Pretty, it's pretty amazing, they put a lot of money into the system, federal government and AT&T, so. All right. If you have any other questions, I've left the pamphlets here, you can call me or, I've been working with Brandon, Isaac, the police department, so. Adam at the school.
Okay. Well, thank you Pam, thank you Nick. We appreciate you guys taking the time and also your patience with our technical issues as well.
That's fine.
We understand technical issues.
All right, thank you guys.
All right, thank you.
You got, I'll leave you some of these for the others.
So that was. Agenda item, number two. Number three, if you did not see the, um, email chain that occurred earlier this morning. The Atlas Board is not able to attend today's meeting for various reasons, et cetera. So we will not be doing any, no action on item number three. Um, then that moves us into item number four, which is an executive session, but I do believe that there are others that can be handled outside of those, so we'll. Skip over that. Uh, the fifth item that I have is in relation to, uh, Coley's discussion, or was that executive session, Coley?
Um, no, I don't think it needs to be executive session, just a, a, I'm looking for statement, our, um. Um, guidance, you know, to, to where we're at and what we're doing with COVID and cases and assisting our. The tribal members with, you know, housing and, and whatever, food. That's all.
Okay, so I think, um, and correct me if I'm, um, not capturing this correctly. We need an update on what services are still available, what services we are continuing to move forward with. What type of housing options we have as well as the status of those, because if there are currently people using them, et cetera. I think some of the feedback that we received and previous requests was that. Either the housing was full or for some reason not available. We basically just need an update on all of that type of thing. So are we able to get that provided to the council, either in a presentation or in writing at some point? Uh, in the near future? And that's kind of a, I guess a question I would put on the administration, Esther or Lanell, is that something we can get?
Oh, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Um, I, I guess is this directed at the administration or the task force? Um, because I thought that that was the question, um. Uh, I thought that's what Coley was adding to the agenda with discussion on the task force.
I feel that, I mean, uh, you're probably correct in that part as well, Esther, I think he was also asking the status of the task force. So I think it's kind of an all-encompassing type update.
Brian, I got a comment.
Um, okay.
Go ahead, Isaac.
Okay, so, uh, one of the things too is that if you look at this is, and I think this might help out, but. It would go towards that Resolution twenty-dash-one-oh-seven. Um, says declaring the health, the health, the public health emergency, the authority. Of the, uh, One of Vegas Public Health to take any, um, action necessary in addressing this infectious disease. Um, so with that, what I was kinda reading along was that everything's back. And I, and I'm not trying to say this in any kinda way, but everything would still be under the health department's, um. I guess there, the ball would still be in their court yet. Um, until this motion or this resolution is brought back and revisited. Then I think we would have to visit with the, the health department, say, hey, where's everything at and what do we got? Because right now, I, uh, part of my understanding is that, um. And we've kind of seen some of these emails through, over the weekends and stuff like that with housing and, and all the, the things, the help that. Was supposed to be provided or is provided with, uh, COVID, uh, people that are having that. Um, is, if we get, uh. Bring them back in and, and say, uh, from the camper situation to the housing, to the groceries. All of that stuff, I think we just need to have a, a sit-down conversation and, and see an update, and I think that's kinda what Coley's asking for. Um, but again, too, uh, I, I kinda was wondering. Um, far as, and, and I'm not trying to speak for Coley or anything, but. Um, if he's asking these questions and sits on the board of directors for the, uh, hospital over there, then. There's another breakdown that maybe as a board member for the hospital, he's not getting the information. Um, that he could be sharing with the council. Um, so I was kinda looking at that, that, that would be one of the things, I don't know if the question is over there, over here. Um, but looking at those kinda stuff is, is, I think we just need to invite everybody into the room. Do away with the virtual for that particular meeting and revisit that, bring the task force in, the health department in. And then get to the bottom of this, because some of the numbers are still continuing to grow. And one of the other things that I look at is that with, uh, um, the relatives to the south of us, they're having their celebration down there. Um, I think that some of those numbers are gonna start spiking up here because we all kinda use the same, uh, dollar store. Um, so we could have another, another rush of everything too, so that's all I got.
All right, and in general, that's pretty much what I was looking for, is that the entire, um, process, the entire scenario needs an update. So, um, because we're not necessarily at the point of, of acquiring that update. Is there a motion to place the COVID task force on the next available agenda, or the next first of the month agenda? Or are, uh, we actually looking at mid-month at this point?
I wouldn't make that motion, Mr. Vice Chair.
Okay, move by Kenny.
That's a.
Second, second by Louis. Any further discussion? The discussion that I'd offer in this is it can either be the mid-month agenda as available or the first of the month in September. To be honest, I'm open to either, cause I know there's probably data to be collected, but, um, we'll have to see, yeah, Laura live.
Um, Mr. Vice Chairman, I think this is so critical, we should do it as soon as possible. Uh, probably, uh, mid-month would be Monday, right?
It should be, yes.
And we should ask the health department to also attend in this motion, shouldn't we? Or are they a member of the task force?
It can be either way, um, I'm fine with that, I'm just trying to get it to where we get the update.
Yeah, let's put it on Monday, Monday, please, uh, because, um, already some people needed housing for isolation. And we saw those emails, so it, it, I don't think, I think we're gonna have more. With this new surge from this, uh, variant that's out there, BA-five. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carried. Uh, Coley, does that, um, capture everything that you wanted to speak about?
Yes, yes, that's a good start, thank you.
So then on to the next items, uh, the ones that I have are definitely not executive session, or maybe one of, well, one of them is. Uh, I'll go with the other ones. In the recent activities that we've had, um, the first thing that I wanna do is make sure that we provide, uh, a definite and. Clear, uh. Gesture or measure of gratitude to everyone that came to our assistance in the water debacle that we had in the village. And while, actually the whole community. Of course, the individuals involved, and I don't wanna say names because I'm probably going to forget someone and that's not. That's the opposite of my point, I'd like to make sure that everyone that stepped up. Understands we appreciate all of their time, effort and everything else that they put forward. And then the other part is the corporate partners who provided donations of water, et cetera, because there may be other things. I just wanna make sure we don't drop the ball on that. Um, I'm not necessarily sure how we would go about, uh, basically saying thank you. But I just wanna bring it to the council's attention because there's a lot of people that came together in this. And we need to make sure that we, we show them our gratitude. Comments or questions?
The only thing that I have is that, um, um. We got four cases, uh, donated from Hy-Vee. Um, so that was kind of looking at what those numbers would have cost, they, that, that was a big, and we kinda didn't really, we're. Called up there and we're asking to purchase and they said, um, call us back. And, um, we're going to, um, we're working on some things and then they, we called them back and they said, no, um, come load them up. If you guys can come pick them up, then we're donating those to the tribe. So, which was kind of, uh, it was really good, it was kind of blown away by Hy-Vee that they would do that. And I know there was, uh, several other ones. Um, but looking at the whole thing with, with the water, uh, one of the things that. Um, happened was within two hours, we had water on site here for, for people. So I, I commend everybody that had a hand in it too. Um, and not one person would have been able to do it alone or an, anybody, I mean, this took a whole team effort from. Contractors to, to just boots on the ground, to people tracking everything and so. Um, I have, uh, some information that'll, uh, uh, we can pile in and put in together for the council. Um, as we move forward down the road, um. And we're also looking at some other, putting some other things in place for backup situations. Just because of the simple fact that, um, they're looking at. Some of the, the levels of the groundwater in this particular area, um, we've had some, some issues come up. In the past, that didn't make it clear to the table. But I think, um, and Laura is always sharing that too about her water concerns and stuff and drought and things. Um, I think it's something that maybe at the strategic planning meeting over. When we have that over at One of Vegas, or if we're still scheduled to have that. Um, we can talk about it a little bit more in depth over there. So that's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Well, again, I'm not exactly sure how this would come about or how. Like I said, I don't want us to drop the ball on that, cause there's a lot of people that helped us get through that, so.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, Louis.
I think we need to get a report. From someone that defines what, what happened. What went wrong? So we can take a look at how we corrected, so it doesn't occur again. Cause it's. Something, something happened that caused that many breaks. Some look bad. Some look small. But. I have it. I'm curious to know what happened. The other thing is that I'm at the end of the line. And. When that happens. And then I get rust and debris in my line. That we have to pump it. And there's a hose. A faucet next to the. System. We pump it till it's clear. Otherwise all that debris goes in to my house. But in the house, I need a filter. It'll filter that. Cause it comes in so much and it stops up the, it covers up the lines. That causes problems. In the house, using the water. The town system. Causes problems, we outside the town. So, we can fix them.
Did we lose this audio?
I think he was done, was he done Louis?
Louis, you still there?
He might be done, but, um, one of the.
Okay, I can't hear him if he's speaking.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah. It, it goes in and out. We heard the part where you were asking for the report and then how. We heard the part where you were asking for the report and then how it affected uh, the line, the end of the line where you are individually, and that's kind of where it ended.
I've had problems with my water system for a long time. And I've been battling with the city. And I don't, I live outside the city, so I don't. The pump costs two thousand dollars. I suck it in there and we shut the pump off if it gets hot. That has saved the pumps quite a bit. But when there's no water, using runs creates problems. I gotta keep the rust and debris out of my house. And the way to do that is to put a filter. The filter will stop that. Then you just change your, yeah, change your filter. It's nothing that I'm doing. No.
All right, thank you, Louis. Yeah, Laura.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion to request physical resources to pre. Hello? Isaac, soon as you turned your computer on, I went dead.
The mic's working there now?
Yeah. Is it working now? Can you hear me?
Laura, it shows your device has logged in. Can you speak into your device?
Let me see.
About now.
Yeah, I can hear you, Darren.
Okay, Mr. Vice Chairman, I want to make a motion to request physical resources, their programs, um, to provide a report to the tribal council on the water break.
Okay, the motion by Laura, is there a second?
I'm thinking it.
Second by Louis, any further discussion?
I'm at.
Coley?
Thanks, um, kind of what Louis saying with Louis' problem. Um, if if it's a village issue, it's time to put it on the village and see. If they're the right people in there, if if it's all hunky dory and things are going right, then they'll get on this. Um, report them what Louis' problem is, and there it is. And and if they're doing things right, they're gonna act and they're gonna start working on this, you know? So we can only see and start this process, you know, to lose an elder. And it's been going on for how long, I don't know, so. Um, gather that information to help and send it to, on behalf of Louis, to the to the village and and see what they say and see what they do, regardless of what's going on between us and them. You know, this is a community member, tribal member and elder.
I think, can you guys hear me?
I agree, thank you, Coley. Any further discussion?
Can you hear me? No.
Any objection? Hearing none, motion carried.
I know, my mic went down.
Okay, um, the next item that I have is also in the same vein of this. I know that um, it's probably gonna be a little bit out there, but I also want to make sure that we express our gratitude to everybody that had a hand in making this year's uh, homecoming celebration occur in such a tremendous way. Unlike last year, I heard absolutely nothing but great comments about this year's celebration. I think it was also a little bit probably overwhelming that the way that it came forward and how it was done was also because for the first time in a couple of years, we were actually able to have the full blown celebration. But I just want to make sure that um, the council and the tribe expresses its gratitude to everyone, the committee, the people, everyone that had a hand in making this year's homecoming celebration truly one of the best that we've had in recent memory, so. And I know that the committee was extremely small this year, so those people that stepped up, they really did a good job. Comments, questions?
Brian?
Yeah.
Uh, this Kenny, I'm gonna allude to that in the issue that I have to bring up at the executive session.
Okay. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I really appreciate the hard work uh, of our treasurer and the powwow committee.
Right.
I I just want to say thank you to them, they work so hard. I want to say thank you to finance for making sure that we have correct financial accountability for our powwow. I wanted to just say that, thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Anyone else?
I have something to say.
Yes, Louis.
I didn't attend the powwow because of my sister's death. And I stayed away, but I was able to watch it at home. And that was really a blessing. A lot of people can watch at home. And we've got to define our production so we have better equipment, get more cameras, and we got to train our young people. This is last two years, we've had to look at other ways to communicate. We found one. And it's gonna have a positive impact on the tribe. We've got to build it and grow it. But each year, we we have a better production. I like what's happening with the One Ovego Indian News. There's stories, there's information. There's a lot of stuff coming out. And it's good, because it informs the membership. So I'd like to congratulate those people that are in the video production, the newspaper, working together. It was a, but I thought it was a fun powwow. Thank you.
Agreed, thank you, Louis. Any other comments or?
Yes, Brian.
Yeah, Coley.
Um, yes, uh, I, thanks for all the positive comments and um, and um, all the thank yous are there and the blessings and prayers, you know, will be answered one way or the other. So you know, it's very positive today, thank you. It was a good powwow.
Thank you, Coley. No, no, microphone, Isaac.
Hey, uh, Brian, this is Gary.
Yeah, Garen.
Um, Gori would like to address the council.
Sure.
Oh, genie, sorry. Excuse me.
Okay, um, now that we're kind of done slapping each other on the back, let's get back to the real problem, and that's the the water grid. It's so mishmash together from over the years of breaks and fixing what they thought was the latest equipment to use, pipes, that the older part is almost non-functioning. And a lot of that that happened was breaks in that like from the twenties and thirties, forties. The real old pipes that were, I don't know what, if they were zinc or or what. And that's the problem. The whole grid has to be repaired, replaced, because it's no longer fixable parts of it without being replaced. So I think there should be a systematic method of replacing as we're going along, not just when a catastrophe happens, but stay ahead of a catastrophe.
All right, Isaac, are you able to get online with the microphone yet?
Not yet. No, I just had. There's. Something just kind of came up here, but afforded onto the council here. The tribe is gonna be assisting the village again. This just came in at uh, ten forty. I'm saying some water issues. That's all.
Okay, if there are no other comments in relation to powwow, the remainder of the items, unless I'm mistaken, are executive session. So do we have a motion for executive session?
Move it, Mr. Second.
Moved by Louis, second by Kenny. Without objection, we are in executive session at ten forty nine AM.
Hey, Vice Chairman, uh, yes, we are going to end the stream. Uh, are we coming back to the stream? For action items?
I don't believe so.
Okay, we will cut the stream, so that's um, for those that are still on, we will be going into executive session. And then uh, everybody's gonna be going into the breakout room, is that right, Brendan? So there's gonna be, you don't have to go to a different link or anything like that. You'll be assigned to a breakout room.
Set me up while I have a quick sip.
So with that, uh, we're ending the stream and um, we'll kind of go from there.
What do I do? So do we come back into?
Nothing, you guys, everyone online, the council members, basically just hold tight and the system will move you into the breakout room.
So uh, can we come back into the chambers then if we're gonna be in executive session for the next two items?
The thing is the mic issues, Kenny. We only got one working mic, the Isaac's mic went down.
Okay.
We we have to go all virtual.
Okay.